YouTube if you want, what you're doing. Tonight's invocation will be given by Nathan Barrett, our Community Development Director, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Emma Roche and Monsette. Mesquite? Did I do okay? Okay. Both fifth graders from Copperview Elementary School. Nathan.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we bow our heads before thee this evening in humble thanks for this day and for the opportunities we have to serve our community. We thank thee for all those who serve, whether here in Saurita or far from home. We thank thee for those around us who seek to lift and inspire and edify. We thank thee, Lord, for this nation we live in and the freedoms we enjoy. We thank thee for the men and women who protect those freedoms, who give of themselves to keep our community safe and secure. Please bless them and their families, keep them safe from harm, and bring them home safely at the end of every day. We ask thee at this time to bestow thy Spirit upon these council chambers. May it fill our hearts with peace, patience, and understanding. May we have grace for the human failings of ourselves and of our neighbors, and bless us with the ability to see the divine in each of us. May thy Spirit bless these proceedings with the dignity and deliberation befitting a free people under thy hand. We give these thanks and ask these blessings, Lord, with humble hearts in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Emma? Monsette? Come up to the microphone there so they can hear you. There you go. And you just begin whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, one of the things you have to know, you have to stay for the whole night. No, you don't. I know it's a school night, so you guys feel free to take off whenever you want, okay? Great job. We hope you come back another time and do it for us. Thank you. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll?
Councilmember Gillespie.
Present.
Councilmember Lisk.
Here.
Councilmember Lydell.
Here.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Priolo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Egbert.
Here.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Next is item number five, Madam Clerk.
Proposition 403, post-election community survey results.
And Haley is going to be introducing this item and also introduce our guests that we've been working with from New Point. And welcome and take it away.
I feel very close to you right here. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Haley Tavoyan. I'm your Public Information Officer. I can know everyone fairly well. I'm excited to close the chapter on the bond project. As we know, the public declined our proposition that we go forward with that measure last November. So what we wanted to do before we turn the page is take a minute to measure what we can know about voter attitudes, about this specific proposition, as well as a broader swath of is there an appetite for a future bond? So New Point, who helped us all along the way with Prop 403, is going to come share more about what we learned throughout the survey process. One of the main takeaways for me is what I've learned in PR is you haven't done your job well if you don't debrief properly. You know, measure the outcomes, take notes. If you ever plan to do something again, you need to do it differently. So that's really what New Point's helping us do here today. So Mary and Steve, who you've heard from before, are going to come give you some data as well as some kind of anecdotal info that Shane and I specifically found interesting in regards to what was happening leading up to this specific election. So a lot of issues related to our purse strings getting tightened, and it was a hard time to ask this question. So with that, I'll take it over to New Point.
Thank you. Yeah, my Air Force days, we used to call it a hot wash after you go through a major exercise or something. Before you forget, you know, you always want to come back and debrief and document lessons learned, so in case either we go again, or we do it a different way, or in the Air Force we have another mission that we learn from it. So, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. For those of you who I haven't met, which is not too many.
Can you just bend that, bend it down a little bit closer to you?
Are you insinuating I'm not real tall?
No.
It's true. I'm Mary Rowley. I'm CEO of New Point Marketing and Market Research, and Steve Lynn is with me. He's our Chief Strategy Officer and has decades and decades and decades of...
Decades.
We're almost the same age. Anyway, a great depth of experience in working on elections and on research aside from elections as well. So with that, I will walk you through what we did. So as Haley said, we're here today to try to get some insight on why the residents, how they voted, and why they voted the way they did, and what else impacted the results of the vote, things that were occurring in the world. Keep in mind, as you look at a survey, it's a picture in time, and I've got the comparison to the survey we did in 2024 before the council decided to put it on the ballot, so I can do some comparisons on that for you. So let's take a quick look at the history here. And the goals for the initial survey, which was done in March, February and March in 2024, was to get a sense of public preferences for what might be included in a bond package. Because at the time, there were more ideas, as there always is, than there was funding availability. So wanted to get a sense of what did the town residents want. We also wanted to get a sense of support, level of preference, and voter support for the different components, so that we were trying as a combined effort here to put out things that people wanted and were likely to at least consider voting for. We also, because the town had never done a bond before, we wanted to also get a sense of do people know what a bond is? And if you haven't lived in a community with a bond, how hard is it to get people to understand? Even though it's a common funding source for municipalities, if you've never dealt with it, it can be very confusing. And then lastly, get a sense of what tolerance there was for people to say, I would spend X dollars a month for this and what I'm going to get out of it. So let's look at the methodology for the survey we did this year. It was in the field between May 10th and June 8th of this year. We had 611 responses with a confidence interval of 95%. And what that means is if we were to repeat this survey 100 times, we would get comparable results 95 of those times. We also had a margin of error of 4%, and the industry preference, the standard, is to be between 3% and 5%. So we were smack dab in the middle of that. That means at any level, when you look at a number, you could say plus or minus 4%. And to give you a sense, in 2024, when we did the survey, we had 1,985 responses, which is a significant response, same confidence interval, because that's most commonly used for this type of research across the industry. And our margin of error was only 2.1% for that survey, which is what, below the industry's So on the post-election research, what we were trying to do was find out why people voted for or against Proposition 403, take a look at the other things going on in the world that might have impacted what happened in the election, get a sense of did people really understand what was on the ballot? How clear was it made to them so they really knew what they were voting on? And also to look at the major neighborhoods. How did they compare to the rest of the community? So we have a few of the demographic, excuse me, statistics to show you. We won't go through some of the common ones like gender and that kind of stuff, but we picked out the ones we thought were most applicable to this particular question on the ballot. So the first we looked at is how long have people lived here? Because if you're brand new to Saurita, you might not have as deep a knowledge of what the needs are versus somebody who's lived here longer. And in this case, we kind of had both ends of the spectrum. If you look at the bar chart, the second bar is people who've lived here one to five years, and the fourth bar is people who've lived here 11 to 20 years. And those were the two most common areas for respondents. We also wanted to know if people lived here year-round, and it turns out that 99% said they did. This compares in 2024 to 2.8 who said they didn't, so pretty comparable data there. Next, we looked at are you a homeowner? Because if you're looking at a bond initiative, the impact is going to be on a homeowner rather than an apartment dweller. And 98% said they were homeowners, and then there were people who said other. We had 1.48 who were renters. Other was they lived with other members of the family, that type of thing. 2024, we had 97% home ownership. So again, very comparable thing that we looked at. The next slide I have to say is our most colorful. Our research director is quite proud of this one, but it gives you a sense of all of the different neighborhoods. And the biggest response, not surprising, was from Rancho Saurita with 45%, followed by Quail Creek with 17%, and Madera Highlands with 10%. And you can see the other communities, and we've got all of this broken out on how people voted, if anybody wants that information. Another factor we thought was important is are there children at home? Particularly looking at a rec center, maybe the trails, things like that that a family would use. And no is 64%, and yes was 35%. And in 2024, people with no kids was 50%, so it was pretty, again, comparable. We also looked at children's ages, and it broke out with the youngest kids under five was 18, almost 19%, 14 to 17, 33%, a third, and then people with kids that were five to 13 was 60, or excuse me, 48%. So to give you a sense of... Okay. Then voting activity, which we asked people if they were registered and how they voted. So in this group of respondents, 98% plus said that they were registered to vote, and 97%, 96%, excuse me, said they did vote. And when we asked people back in 2024, 92% said that they would vote, and 2.9% said no, and the people that said, I don't know, 4.7%. So again, we had some comparable numbers here to look at. So next, we asked, are you aware that we have a proposition, had a proposition on the ballot? Now, this is post, so you would assume it would be very high, and it was. It was 98%. So people knew what was in there. And then we said specifically, well, what was in there? And they got it right. It was the rec center, the police department, and if you look down, all the way down to trails, the top in this list are the things on the ballot. The additional dog park was mentioned early on, didn't make it. Other people, we have some open-ended responses of things people thought that didn't fall into any of these. We threw in a ringer of sewer system improvements, just to see if people are paying attention. And then the pistol range also was talked about, but didn't end up on the ballot. But if you look at that, people knew what was in Prop 403, which is important. Then we asked them about funding and said, well, what kind, how are we going to fund this thing that's on the ballot? And municipal bonds by far got the best recognition, followed by property tax. And I have to admit that those two are somewhat the same, and so a lot of people that chose property tax probably thought, well, that's what's going to fund the bonds. I have no way of knowing that for sure, but it makes sense. A very, very small amount said sales tax, and nobody said gas tax. So those were accurate. Then we said, do you support bonding in general? And we were surprised to see almost 31% said no, because it's such a common way to fund municipal projects. But again, if you haven't lived in a community that's done that, you might not be familiar. And then the larger groups said, yes, they would, but they would want to know what it is, which I think makes a whole lot of sense. You're just not going to blindly vote for something if you don't know what it is. Then we said, well, how did you vote? And 72% said they voted no, and 28% said they voted yes. And the respondents who were 35 to 44 were most likely to vote yes. However, it was still less than those among that group who voted no. Only 34% of those making over $150,000 a year said they voted yes, which is interesting because one would, might assume that that's the group that would be able to pay the easiest for this. And then the responses were pretty much the same across different demographics. The 2024 results of, you know, would you consider, how would you consider voting? A third said yes, and I got that backwards, excuse me. A third said no, and two-thirds said yes. Type on our slide, I apologize. Then we asked them, why, why would you consider these projects? Why would the town consider these projects? And the reasons given most was, well, we've outgrown what we have today. We need the improvements right now. And there's been a lot of communication about the history of growth in this community consistently. So I think people took a look at it, some of them, and said, well, if we're already at capacity and we're going to keep growing, what do we need? Again, that's my interpretation, not anything cast in stone. The next group said they supported the projects, they felt the cost was reasonable, felt that it would be smarter to build things at today's costs, and if they're going to pay for it, they want to be able to use it. In other words, I don't want to pay for it today and have my great-grandkids be able to use it. Then the other reason was my friends and neighbors supported it. That was less than a half a percent. And as we're going to see going further into this, that is a key point. So then, there we go. The characteristics of people voting on how did they vote? Generally, younger residents voted, and over 47% of those who were voting had kids at home. The top three reasons for voting no were the same across a lot of the respondents. And the open-ended responses that we had, they said, well, we already have a recreation facility, and that's from Rancho. From Quail Creek, voting behavior was similar. They had more male respondents to this questionnaire than female, which is typically unusual. We see more often, even if very slightly more females voting. Big population there, over 65, again, no surprise there. No one had kids at home, and the top three reasons were similar, except that they ranked inflation higher than the other two that we dove into more deeply. Next...
Mary?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Mary, I'm sorry. Did you, did you cover why folks voted no?
We haven't gotten there yet.
But that was a slide, that was a slide backwards.
Oh.
If you don't mind going back one more.
No, not at all.
One more.
Sorry.
There it is.
There we go.
If you don't mind covering that, that'd be good.
No, that's the most important.
I think you did yes, but the next slide is no.
Yes, I did do yes. Sorry about that. That was a test. Yes, you did. Okay. So we talked about why people voted yes. I must have hit the button twice. Why did they vote no? And of the top four reasons that people gave, most common related to other costs, cost increases, and taxes. Recent property tax assessments, the fire district, the school district, even though that wasn't an increase, often when there's a renewal, people see it as an increase.
Well, just even though the rate didn't increase, if property assessments or values go up, then people are paying more out of their pocket. So that makes sense, this response.
That's true. And they did mention bonds. They wanted to break up what was in the proposition and vote on everything separately, which, given the ballot we had, which was two-sided, you know, double-page...
Full-page, yeah.
I'm not sure what would have happened had we done that, but typically, that's, that's not done, just because sometimes the things that would help carry with a bonding organization need to, need to be there, and so...
And I know we were concerned about ballot weariness, you know, during that time, too.
Again, it's a, it's a strategy, but was the case. People thought inflation was already making everything too expensive. 10%, 11% said we didn't see the value of the projects. 10 and 1/2% didn't, didn't trust town government to be responsible. 1% didn't understand how the projects would be paid for. Only a half a percent didn't know what was included, and a small quarter of a percent didn't realize it was on the ballot. So, and then, again, nobody said my friends and neighbors opposed it, so... Okay, so we went through Rancho.
The next one was Quail Creek.
Okay. Then Quail Creek. Now we're caught up. For Quail Creek, again, voting behavior was similar. We did go through this one. I don't know that I got down to the last reason, which was, again, inflation being the highest, but we went through the other parts. Madera Highlands had a slightly more positive vote of yes. They had roughly a third or 35 to 44, and 30%, 65-plus, 41% with kids at home.
Is there a separate slide for that one? Just to be honest.
Sorry. And they had slightly lower education levels compared to the other ones, and the top three reasons for voting no, again, were the same.
And they're, but they're also less amenitized than some of the other communities, which...
Yeah. We got that in the focus groups for sure. Come on, this isn't... Okay, there we go. So we asked people how they, how they like to hear about things, how they, where they got their information from. Number one is the town website, direct mail, newspaper stories or ads, online news sources, local Facebook groups, emails, word of mouth. Those were the top. And among the very top are communication pieces and components from the town. So people were listening and paying attention to what the town put out. Then we asked them... Oops. I think the clicker's the problem. There's one more, and it's not coming up. Well, I'll just read it to you. We asked them how they wanted to hear about things in 2024, and it was basically the same information. Emails and Facebook groups were higher than the website, but the top numbers there all came out in the same way. Then we, just to kind of relive the year, we started out with the council retreat in January, then in the late spring, we did the public opinion survey. In June, council voted to put this on the ballot. In August, the ballot was printed by the county and sent to be mailed, and it was mailed in mid-August. So if you look at that, and knowing the ballots start to come out in October, it was already well in print by the time that it, the other information came out. The county tax invoices came out in September, and that included the new Santa Rita Fire District and, of course, higher property valuations. The early ballots were mailed out October 10th. So you can see between August and October, there's not a lot of time there, and then the election was held. If you look at this, there's one key component missing, and that is a citizens group wanting to get behind passage. So what were the challenges with that? Whoops. I don't know why this is jumping around.
Well, you had it.
No, that was it.
That was it.
Okay.
No, no, right there.
Okay. As I said, there was no ground game. Whoops. I don't know why I'm having such difficulties today. I apologize. Whoops, not me.
Mark's coming to the rescue.
Thank you, Mark.
There, oh, oh.
Okay.
One more.
There we go. Okay. Sorry about that. We didn't have a ground game, basically, and I know the mayor and Steve worked together to try to make this happen, and it's really, really key to have a ground game. I can't stress that enough. It's key to building trust, to have people hear from their neighbors that this is important. It's, it's important to overcoming aversion to tax, if that's a key factor. And people talking to their neighbors give relatable messages. It's not an ad, it's not even something on the website. It's person-to-person, which is always most effective, word of mouth. And the likelihood of a bond being, and I did a lot of research on this, and it basically came up within very tight ranges of this. The likelihood of a bond passing without vocal citizen support, if you have that, it ranges from 55 to 70%. If you have no advocacy at all, it ranges from less than 20% to 35%, which is not going to pass. We talked about the tax bills, a little bit about the school district, and then there was also a lot of national sentiment, and I've, I've got data on that I can share as well, as how throughout the year, people saw prices going up. If you remember, all of the news stories about the price of eggs that we all saw, and then it just ramped up over the year. So that's it. Any questions? And I appreciate your putting up with my skills.
Any questions for Mary? Diane?
Yes, Diane.
Just wanted to add one more thing, Diane, if I may.
Oh, please do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this last slide is very important, but I want to point out something. Even with a ground game, even with a ground game, it was going to be difficult to overcome the things that they said were problematic about voting yes for a bond this year. And it would have been closer, but it may still not have, have passed, even with a vigorous ground game. And if, if you remember, when we started this process, we told you that if you had roughly 62, 63% positive on any one of the, any one of the items, the likelihood is it might pass. And we had those numbers on the, on the package that you put together. Obviously, when things changed in the environment, particularly with respect to the, the county, the county tax bills going out, which had, as, as the manager points out, not only an increase because your valuation went up, even if the rate stayed the same, but also the addition of the fire district and the addition of the school bonds, which were also an increase because of increased valuation, even at the same rate. People were basically, they'd had it with increases. And when you looked at the, at the projects that were there, I think there was a sentiment that if the lead project on the bond package was a recreational project for people to swim and have a good time, that may not have been the right time to ask for that investment that year. And that's, you can't know that until you do it, but I just want you to know that it was probably a tough year to go out in any case.
Right. And I know to the ground game, I know with RTA Next being on there, the business community's looking at raising over $1 million probably. Obviously, it's a bigger region, it's all of Pima County, not just us, but that's the type of ground game and money they're actually looking at raising to support that type of initiative.
Yeah, and we had, as I recall, we had one... Yeah, and we had, as I recall, we had one contribution of five thousand dollars.
Mayor?
Yes.
And council, I also want to point out, you know, we can, we can look back on this and, and view it as, as not our shiniest moment in our, in our history as a community. But I would note that, I would note that there's only one reason that you take something to the voters, is because you want to know the voters' will. The only way to do that is to put it in front of the voters. I think this has been successful in that we wanted to know what the voter, in all of these individual meetings, we invite the kids here in the, in the council chambers, we invite parents in here, the parks and rec groups come in, and what have they all been telling us for the last, who knows how many years, even longer before I've been in, you know, we need X, Y, and Z. Where is this? How come we don't have this? Well, the only way to know if a community is really serious about supporting those types of amenities is to put the question in front of the voters, and that's what we did, and you got, and you got the response.
Ironically.
So I would view that exercise as a success, in that you know where the voters are sitting. And then we go through this exercise to understand the why behind the way they voted. So that, you know, in the, in the future, if, if you ever wanted to do, you know, take another stab at some of these projects, you at least have the benefit of looking backwards and probing our, our community a little bit more in terms of why you voted the way you voted. That's all.
Yeah, and I found it ironic that right afterwards, probably had five, six-plus emails, maybe you did as well, asking for more pickleball courts. And I'm like, we just had a question on adding more pickleball courts on there, but it was.
To the manager's point, the other thing that this did, in a positive way, is it introduced to the community the concept of bonding for improvements. And for a community that has never gone out for a bond before, that becomes very important. Mature communities, and I, not that Saguaro is not mature, you're thirty years old, but you're still a teenager in many ways, in terms of governance, they're used to this question being asked periodically because it's the way municipalities fund the future. You've now introduced the concept, and the question then is, when is the next time when there's enough need, and enough support, and enough concern on the part of the electorate, that they would want to bond for improvements, that they would help you decide which are the most important to put on the ballot? And so, it's not going to be a new concept anymore. It's something that the town now is prepared to deal with in the future.
Right, thank you.
Diane, you have a question?
Yes. So in one of the slides, it said that ten percent of our, the people that responded felt that the town was fiscally irresponsible.
Yeah.
Talk to me about that. That disturbs me. How typical is it to see that response? And I'm scratching my head about that.
That is a typically.
With balanced budgets and our wonderful finance manager that aces it every year and wins award after award after award, and we have such an open, transparent process with budget retreats that are public, and so much time and energy and transparency. I'm scratching my head about that.
That means ninety percent were happy with the government, so that's what I took from it.
Well, not only that, Mr. Mayor, but that is an extraordinarily low number by comparison.
Oh.
In other words, if you ask that question across municipalities in the United States, ten percent is a very low number for that response. So I would not look at it as being a slam of any kind. I would say, as the mayor said, ninety percent of the people don't feel that way, they didn't mention it, but it's also the case that only ten percent felt enough to mention it.
Right.
And that's a good number for the, for the town to know.
Right, that's how I took it.
I just wanted to add one last thing, and that is, one thing the town can really feel proud of is, if you look at where people got the information, and, and how well they knew what was on the ballot, they were getting the information from the town, and it was put out there in such a way that it was digestible, so.
Haley didn't pay you to say that, right?
No, she didn't.
No, okay, just checking. Any other questions? To my right, to my left? We have, do you have any wrap-up comments, Shane, or you're okay? Okay. Kim, did you have any?
Actually, actually, yes, I was trying to raise my hand on that.
Oh.
I mean, I've run bonds before where I used to live. Bonds are very difficult, even when they are, a community is used to them coming every four years, or every, you know, ten years, depending on how, who's running the bond, the school district, or the, the community, the government. But I think, as it was pointed out, I think the big thing is hearing from your neighbors and support, when you hear other people supporting, not just your council, because they're just going to go, oh, they just want this, but they put this bond together. I think the groundwork is, is the big factor in why this actually probably failed, as, as the other things that came up. But I think, I really think Saguaro should be proud of what they did for a first time out, and it was a big package. But I don't think there's anything to be ashamed of, what we tried, and that's how you know. You take it, that's why you run bonds. You find out from your constituents, from your residents, what they want, what they don't want, and by having the follow-up survey, really helps us move along, and what the future is going to be like, if you do want to run a bond in the future. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And I just had a quick question, because I know Morana and Oro Valley now, they have a bigger sales tax base, you know, so they've ran half-cent, you know, for Naronha Park and Oro Valley. Morana, very conservative town, very similar to ours, have run it twice, one for the police station and one for their recreation center, but they were able to probably, because of that sales tax revenue, they were able to pay it off in four or five years. Is there any history on, you know, doing a sales tax as opposed to bond, if we had that ability? Now, our problem would be, a package like that, we'd probably have to go out twenty years, or fifteen, or something, which probably wouldn't have the same appetite as five, seven years.
Again, you have, Mr. Mayor, you have to look at the, you have to look at where the community is in its development.
Right.
And who is moving to that community? Now, there's, the large influx of families near-term in Saguaro are younger.
Right.
But you have an invested group of older people who have been here a longer period of time, and who, for, for a large part of their existence, have their own amenities with them in their community.
Right.
And so when you talk about amenities that are not only distant from them, but also either duplicative of, or not particularly high on their list of needs, you have a different result. Morana is growing at such a high rate in so many different areas, and it's so spread out, that they have an automatic sort of problem to solve, just by virtue of the fact that everybody in those small communities that make up Morana are a long way from the infrastructure that they're developing. And so they can parse that out in different ways and get people to buy into it, simply for convenience, if nothing else. The other thing I would say about a sales tax, of course, it's regressive, where a property tax is not, and so it also means that when you put a regressive tax in place, you are disadvantaging the people who can afford it least, and that's a problem in any community.
Right. Thanks, thanks. And we have one speaker card, Noah, maybe representing that ten percent of the population, that.
But it's more than just the ten percent. So I'm Noah Sundberg, I've lived here for eighteen years, and I was against the bond. I was pretty vocal about it at the time, because we used to run on being fiscally responsible by not having bonds. That was Mayor Bloomberg's big theme, and you threw it all away. And you went against it, and you say, it's just a vote, we want to find, you know, you stood beforehand. The fact is, people heard you, they listened, and they didn't believe you. That's what the truth is. And I don't know what you and Steve were trying to do to coordinate things. Hopefully, it wasn't with independent expenditures, because I don't know if that'd be reasonable, but the people got together, the people didn't support it, because the people didn't support it. So saying, hey, if people had gotten together and wanted this, we maybe would have had a chance. Well, the people didn't get together to support it because they didn't want it, and you pushed it, and you didn't care. And you said, we're just spending, and then we're just wasting all this money on pitchers, and elections, and on polls that don't mean jack, and we're going to finish up by saying, look what we did. We're going to have a poll that doesn't tell us anything we didn't already know. That's what you just did. You funded something in, you said, we'll double down. Hey, we have a road bill that's going to ask where, we want regional connectivity, but we're not going to pass a bill that doesn't give us regional connectivity, and we're all going to vote yes, even though we're not going to get regional connectivity from this bill, and most of it's going to fund projects that aren't in our area for a decade. Didn't help us, but did we learn from our past thing? No, we didn't. You just said, we want to do what we want to do, and we'll pay people to try to convince you. Why didn't you do what we wanted to? How can we tell you next time? We're telling you what to do, and you didn't listen, so we're going to tell you what to do again, and again, and again, and we'll waste your money doing it, because who's going to stop us? We're happy to do it. We'll waste the money, we'll ask, and we'll say, give us a hand. We did such a good job pushing something we didn't, that our people didn't want, and we didn't listen to them. And we put out fake polls, and we spent money trying to convince them this is what they should do, and when they said no, we didn't say, let's take it on the chin, and let's do better next time. Let's do maybe a reduced thing, because guess what? I bet you if you'd put an outdoor pool, you might have gotten it, because maybe that's what people really wanted outside of the communities that already had it. Maybe pools in Arizona has precedence elsewhere. Maybe we've already paid for a pool that most people in the community didn't feel like they got to use with the school district, and maybe feel a little bitter about that, some of us weren't part of that process, too. So, yeah, I think that if you'd done what you'd wanted to, you were not going to get what you wanted, the town doesn't want it. But the solution isn't, let's do more polls, let's do more things to convince ourselves. We just didn't do it the first time. We bragged about not having this, and we're going to keep doing it, and now, we want to just push it on you again, and we're going to give ourselves an applaud, because we didn't listen to the people, and the people said very loudly, we are not happy with what you did to us. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Call to the Public. Call to the Public is now open. Individuals may speak for three minutes, spokespersons for ten. Council cannot discuss matters, not on the agenda. However, at the end of the Call to the Public, council members may respond to criticism, report, request staff to review the agenda item, add the topic to a future agenda, and we do ask for civil discourse, harassment, personal attacks, yelling, discriminatory remarks will not be tolerated. Please direct all comments to the council as a whole, and allow others to speak. Noah?
So I'm Noah Sundberg, I've lived in this community for eighteen years, and I want police we can trust, and that we like, and that we're not afraid of. Ones that don't, in four seconds, throw someone to the ground. And I want a council that will do the right thing and say, so I know we had some reports, which you can take whatever you want from what Morana said and from what the DPS said, but that was a violent attack. And whether you think it was criminal or not, I think you guys know it wasn't right. He was thrown to the ground in four seconds. He was never trespassed, never arrested till afterwards. He was falsely accused of assaulting a police officer. The chief said he arrested him for resisting arrest. Well, what was the arrest he was resisting? Because there was none of that mentioned, because he wasn't trespassed, he wasn't accused of being arrested, he just was thrown to the ground. He was accused of assaulting police officers, and Morana said, we found nothing of the sort. And the chief was upset that the Morana went that way, but he sided with the investigating department. It was wrong, and I just want you to know that there are stories that have villains and heroes, and when we attack people first, we choose violence first, we're the villains, and we're a council that accepts that, and says, I'm not going to rebuke that, I'm going to stay silent. Well, stay silent, you're a coward and a villain. But if you, you need to say, this wasn't right. We expect more from our town. We want better policing. We want our people in our county, in our town, to be proud of our police. And yes, they deal with all kinds of elements, and some of them maybe are annoying. Maybe some of them aren't the best group of people, and maybe some of them are seventy-year-old ladies that have the door smashed into their face. This shouldn't have ever have happened, which we fight against. We do our own self-deposition and claim it's there. When we throw a guy to the ground, we make false accusations that the police chief even admits isn't in the video. I think he grabbed for the gun. So did your commander Carlson. Never happened, they both know what didn't happen, but they said it anyway. Why would we lie about stuff? Why would we claim things are false? So, I want to be proud of my police, and I'm not with Chief Nolan. I want to be proud of my council. I want you to be fiscally responsible. I want you to do what's right. I don't want, I want you to look at the zoning ordinances and say, hey, they can build a tar factory right next to our community and stop that. I want us to not push bonds that we don't care about. I want us to say, we want people to know that we did the right thing, and we'll speak up and say what's right, even if it's hard. Thanks.
Thanks. Next, we come to brief summary of council and town manager events. Oh, I'll go with Kim first, if you have anything, Kim, so I don't forget you.
Thank you. No, I don't have anything to reply. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Lidle? Oh, is that what, that was for you?
Yes.
Well, I didn't know that. I thought it was a gift.
No.
Mayor, council, friends and families, this past Saturday went to the sixteenth gathering of American Indian, Indian veterans. It was amazing what the Tejano and Paki tribes have put together, and it's an annual thing that I did not know about. I learned a lot. I learned a lot that we need to work with them. We need to work as a community, and we need to take that pro step. But it was a really great event, it was about three hours, the presentations were great, food was okay. But I would recommend any veteran, any veteran or a family member or a veteran, to look into this for next year. Thank you.
Thanks, and I'm sure you'll be on the invite list, so make sure we're aware of it when you hear, because you were there.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morales?
Hmm?
Debbie, do you have anything?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to mention, a few weeks ago, probably a few months ago, when we started this whole waste management, I know I mentioned it to you and to you, Shane, about a couple that came and approached me about how this is wrong, and, you know, they didn't want it, and they have three things a week, three pickups a week in Quail Creek. Yesterday, they approached me again, and they are very pleased with the whole process. So thank you, Daniel, to you and your team. It was delightful to hear them say that. You know, they were impressed with how, how much the, the, how quick the trash cans were picked up, and how quick they were delivered, and I don't think they saw any hiccups. They were getting three pickups a week because, because we couldn't understand, like, there's only two people living in that house. Why do they need three pickups? They have small, they had smaller trash cans. So now they're saying their trash cans are too big, and they want smaller ones. So, thank you, Daniel.
Absolutely. Diane?
This morning, I attended the Saguaro Wins meeting. It's a community meeting at the Saguaro Unified School District, and community leaders gather every month to show support to the school system and to share what's going on with their respective communities. It's always an invigorating process. Plus, I am going to be attending a conference on water issues at the Tucson Convention Center. Many of our residents have concerns about the amount of water we have in our aqua force, so I'm continuing to pursue that.
Thank you. Dr. Gillespie?
Just one, but you were there. So it was a pleasure, we were, the Arizona Corporation Commissioner Renee Lopez came down and visited our community, and invited the mayor and I and the town manager to meet with him, and it was just a great experience to first build the connection with another commissioner on the ACC. He had a wealth of knowledge. It was a wonderful hour or so, just getting to know him, and asking questions, and being able to, I don't know, overall, it was just really good. I got a better understanding of their role, and also what he has done previously. So, just wanted to, it was just really great.
Yeah, and his background was amazing, being a nuclear engineer, naval officer, and again, learning what the ACA, or ACC does. I don't think we had touched on, a lot of us went to the League of Cities and Towns, I think that was between our last meeting. So, you know, thanks for the attendance, and the vice mayor got a sixteen-year award on there, so congratulations. And I think in the interim, it hasn't been mentioned, I attended the Arizona Park and Recreation Association, and Winterfest was the event of the year award winner there. So, from a town, from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand. So, it was a really nice event to attend. Also, Mayor Hone was the public official of the year, and his son was there to pick up the award on his behalf. So, that was a wonderful event. So that's two years in a row. Dylan won last year, and the event of the year was Winterfest, so we get a lot to be proud of. And I know no one's And I know no one's going to be happier when the full transition of solid waste is, because I think Daniel hairs from me, oh, I don't know, 32 times a day on, um, uh, you know, because people reach out to me, what about this neighborhood? And, you know, waste management was picked up. So it's been doing a yeoman's lift on, you know, getting this thing done. People don't realize to deliver not only all new cans, but also to pick them up. And we've got, I think Diggins is out of business and, you know, so we have to go get those. And so, thank you, Daniel. It's a, I know it's a big lift now from there. Did you have anything before, just go to the?
Yeah, Mayor, I had three items I needed to cover or wanted to cover with you. First, just as a reminder, we continue to have a vacancy seat on our Board of Appeals. I just wanted to bring that out in this public forum. Uh, the vacant seat is specific to the fire industry. Um, just a reminder, the Board of Adjustment hears appeals of building official decisions and will be involved in the adoption of the new 2024 International Building Code that's slated to hit you guys later this, this year. As a reminder, there is no vacancies, there, I'm sorry, there is no residency requirement on this board. So I just wanted to put that out. If you know of anybody that, uh, might have an interest and, and meet those qualifications, whether they're a resident or not, um, sure, yeah, along that sort, then get the, those names over to Anna or Nathan. Thank you. Second item is, um, as an organization, we've been official, we've officially begun implementation of the priority-based budgeting tool. Remember that the council directed staff to implement the PBB tool this, uh, this fiscal year. And so that effort has begun. We've completed, um, well, I'm sorry, before I go there, the, the tool was, you asked us to implement this tool to accomplish really three high arching outcomes. Um, one was to enhance the mayor and council and staff's ability to make data-driven decisions during the budget process. Um, second, uh, was to help bring greater transparency to the town's annual budget process. And the third, uh, reason was to better align budget allocations with community values. And so, um, I'm pleased to announce that we've successfully completed phase one of implementation. And what that involves is the creation of cost centers or programs. So, um, you know, we had to, we had to break down all of our services into these programs and we've done that. And now we're, um, we're in phase two and that's where we allocate costs each of those programs. So we're basically restructuring our entire budget, um, to match up with these, these programs. So that in the future, we can say, what is it, what does it really cost us to do this service for the community? Um, what does it cost us to do that service for the community? And that involves personnel all the way down to materials, pencils, paper clips, you know, that paper, that kind of stuff. Um, and so I just wanted to make, make you aware that we're, we're wrestling through that implementation with the high hopes of being able to, um, take a crack at utilizing the tool in your next round, uh, your next budget round for fiscal year 27, right? Yeah, so. And the third thing I wanted to update you on is that the, uh, you know, one of the mayor and councils approved new positions in our organization, which is the risk manager position, um, that has recently gone out on the streets for recruitment. So, um, happy report that we've begun that process and looking forward to getting that position on board to help us, um, be, be smarter about how we do our work out in the field, safer about it and have less injuries and claims that affect our insurance premiums. So, uh, thank you, that, that's the.
Thanks. And I did forget to mention, I saw George in the audience, um, the I-19, reminder, influential citizens impact, um, is tomorrow night. So I know I'm going to be seeing a lot of you and hear about all the wonderful folks that have been submitted. I know Mac Chernowski is one who's been nominated and, uh, was that? And Liz? Yep, on there. So, um, hope to see a lot of you there. Uh, and our reminder, Monday, September 22nd is the next regularly scheduled meeting. Moving to item number eight is consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Still moved.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number nine?
Discussion and possible action regarding town council legislative ambassador guidelines and a council appointment.
Thanks. And I know Shane's going to take that, but I just wanted to, um, you know, start, you know, if anybody's thinking about it, um, you know, when you represent the council, it's the, you know, you might have, everybody has individual biases and leanings and such. But this position will be for somebody that can carry out the will of the council as a whole, may, may agree most of the time, because usually we're pretty aligned, but may not. Um, and also secondarily, just think about the time availability, because once the legislative session starts, it has to be a little bit more, you know, flexible to be able to take that, um, take that duty on. So with that, Shane, do you want to talk about that position?
Sure. Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. Don't, don't really have a, a presentation per se to go through, but I do have some talking points I want to cover you, cover with you about this program. This is, this is, um, you know, the pioneering of a new program for the council to consider. I want you to know that, um, this is merely a proposition and of course, the council doesn't have to move in this direction if you don't want to, um, at the end of the day. But, uh, we're bringing it forward as staff because we see value in the proposition as we inter, in, interact with the state legislature, trying to move forward, uh, the council's legislative priorities at the state level. Um, you know, when it comes to, uh, providing testimony at the, on the floor at the state legislature or meeting with, uh, our state representatives to advocate for the town's position, uh, we, as staff, we see value in strategically inserting a representative from our town council, so our local, a local elected official to, um, you know, put a nice bow tie, you know, on, on, uh, on that, on that package. You, your voice just has a lot of weight as an elected official. And so, um, every year we go through this exercise where we revisit your legislative priorities for the upcoming year. That will probably hit around November, um, December at the very latest, but usually around the November period. And, um, and with that, we have our agenda slated for the upcoming, um, legislative year. And that would involve not only the work that's done at the state legislature, but part of that is also the federal agenda that, that, um, that a council delegation takes care of at the, at, at the federal, on, on Capitol Hill. Um, with that said, this, this is exclusively focused at the state side, this program. And, um, and what, what we want to, what we're proposing, um, is something that we think will help promote the policies that align with the, with Saraweta strategic goals and the councils, the mayor and, mayor and council's legislative priorities. We're proposing that a council representative be chosen from amongst you. The how to go about that, we can talk about in just a few minutes, but I wanted to describe what we hope these, you know, that this, the responsibilities would look like. Um, you know, we propose the criteria for selecting a person, um, follow, and I'm, I'm pleased to say that I think all of you qualify. Um, but it's, you know, having a general common knowledge of our community, um, what we're about, um, how we tick, um, being familiar somewhat with the legislative process and staff can help whoever is chosen or selected, um, from year to year with that, as well as our state lobbyist. But also be confident in their ability to communicate. Quite frankly, you're going to be meeting with people who can come across as having a lot on their plate and a lot of, you know, a lot of details in front of them. And so to be able to, you know, have a very concise message and deliver that message is, is very important. So we look for that in whoever you guys, um, select as, as your, as your representative. As a role, this, uh, this individual would act as a primary spokesperson for Saraweta during the legislative session, um, as a rep, as an elected representative, would provide testimony, answers, answer questions and clarify, um, the town's stance on relevant legislation, um, would collaborate with the mayor, the town managers, the town manager and, and staff and the town's contracted lobbyists to ensure that the town's legislative priorities align with proposed legislation. Um, and that the, the designated representative would serve at the pleasure of the town council and the term of the assignment would be tied to each legislative session. So we would be back again like this tonight with you at the beginning of next fall to appoint yet another person. The idea is that could rotate or it could be the same person depending on how the council lays out on this. Does that make sense? Any questions on that so far?
Any questions?
Nope. Um, staff would be here to help prepare that person all along the way. And if you were ever asked to give testimony, there'd be speaking points. We would talk about, um, maybe the pros and cons to, uh, the, the town's position, what they may hear from, uh, the legislative floor or the representative they may be talking to and how to be prepared for that conversation the best we can. Um, let's see here. Uh, as you mentioned, Mayor, this would require, um, some flexibility on the schedule, um, and perhaps even odd hours of the day, not necessarily just your traditional eight to five. If you ever follow the legislature and, and what's happening on the floor, it doesn't really jive very well with a, an eight to five schedule all the time. So, and then sometimes the individual meetings with representatives could be even at odder hours. It just depends. Rest assured, we would do everything we could to keep those within the typical eight to five, um, but just know that that flexibility might be important at some point. Obviously, uh, part of the role of this, of this legislative ambassador would be to help build bridges, build relationships, um, connect dots and help us advance the, the council's legislative priorities for, you know, for that, for the community and for that, uh, particular legislative session. Um, and then at the end of each legislative session, uh, the council representative would provide a brief to the town council and key stakeholders about their experience and the legislative outcomes of the session. So they'd be involved. Normally we had our management analysts provide that, uh, that report. Uh, the council ambassador would join staff in, in providing a more rich, um, account of the legislative session. So that, that would also be a responsibility. And then of course, um, part of that debrief would be, um, soliciting feedback from the ambassador on what went well, what maybe could have gone better. How can we, how can we continue to, um, evolve the program in such a way that we become better and better and more efficient, uh, over, over time? With that, have to answer any questions and then we can talk about maybe a process to help you guys make, uh, a decision if you want to move forward with this.
Yeah, any, well, first of all, any, well, questions and/or think it's a good idea and to at least put it out there to look forward. Vice Mayor, I think I see you leaning towards the mic.
You saw me under the mic. Um, I'm just clarifying, make sure I understand. Uh, they would, the representative, whatever we talk about during the legislation and we say these are the areas that we want, that is the role of this representative on those issues, not going out on other topics or other things. It's what the council decides they would like the, the town to represent.
Yeah, I, yes. The answer, the short answer is yes. I would, I would go as far as saying that i- if, if you found out as a council that the ambassador was actually talking about more things than what the legislative priorities are for the council, then I would suggest that that person needs to not be your ambassador anymore. Because the, the authorization that you're giving that person, um, is to echo your voice as a council, as a unified council in terms of what your legislative priorities are, to echo that voice. And that's the only business that they have, which is, I think, maybe part of the comments that the mayor was making on the opening end of this. Um, you, you might have, you might be in front of somebody as an elected official and you have a personal agenda that you want to get done as an elected official yourself. But if you're there as the town's ambassador, the council's ambassador, you are only charged to speak to the points that the council has already spoken to and said, move this forward.
Okay. And this person would need to, because sometimes we have not had a huge controversial, um, agenda, point for people, but they would have to be able to say, even though I disagree with this personally, the council has said that they, this is something important to them and they would need to be able to still, um, support it and rally behind it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the person would need to be able to put away their personal.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's the idea.
Just wanted to make sure.
I, you know, I would venture a guess that that could be challenging at times.
That's why I wanted to make sure that's identified.
Yeah, yeah, good point. And it's, and it's very appropriate to have that clarification here now at the front end of it.
And my third thing is, is I'm assuming that this would not work for anyone with a full-time job, like doctors and teachers and.
I would venture a guess that that wouldn't, as, as much as you might like, like to do it.
So I know two people that are for sure out.
Okay.
I'm on there. Any questions? And were you thinking, um, working on the, on the process or could we make a motion tonight or all of the above?
If the council can see itself through making a decision tonight, I think that's very appropriate.
Okay. Okay. I guess one of the things is, oh, did you have a comment, Kim? Or just coughing?
I, I do, I do. I, I don't know how to do this since I'm virtual. I put my hand up, but I don't know if you see me or don't see me. Um, but can you hear me? I'm not even sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I think this is phenomenal. And personally, I would love to, um, nominate councilmember Morales, because I think she's knows the town, she's a great advocate for the town of Saraweta. And, um, I, I know she, I think she has time, I shouldn't say I know she has the time, if she wants the nomination, but I think she'd be a great ambassador.
Yeah, you'll have to, I'm sorry, Kim, you'll have to repeat that, because we got everything but the nomination.
Oh, sorry. My nomination is councilmember Morales.
Oh, okay. Um, are you going to not travel and stick a?
Are we doing nominations right now or are we just giving direction?
Well, well, no, it's potentially a nomination. Um, but, you know, one, you'd have to be willing to do it and, you know, be around, um, January to about May, June, no travel.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I, I think, I think one, one way, one way I saw us getting through this is kind of similar to how you guys handle the, the mayor and the vice mayor.
Right.
And you just go down the line and see what nominations come forward and then you guys act on those nominations. That might make sense.
But usually when we do that, it's, are you willing to accept the nomination? That's why I was kind of.
Can, can I point, some, this may not, I'm not sure if everybody's ready to even say they want to do it or not. So I'm wondering if we should wait and allow the people to consider what the time constraint is and the obligations are.
I agree.
Before we start nominating people, they're like, I don't know what I just got signed to.
Yeah, that's our, I mean, that's, that's kind of our process.
I just saw, I saw Devin Morales's eyes going, wait, what?
My, my comment on the front end is, is if the council could see its way through making a decision tonight, great. But if you feel more comfortable, you know, having some time to digest and then coming back on the 22nd or even a later date, um, that's fine.
Great. Any, any thoughts? Diane?
So, I would like to put my own name in the hat. I have a keen interest in doing this and it's been developing over years. Um, I have been meeting with Mina Mecross on a monthly basis to go over the, uh, his legislative report and to take a deep dive into understanding how bills are passed. Um, I have a lot of experience in being able to testify and to present positions. And during my three years on this council, I developed an appreciation for the tension that exists between one's personal stance and what's in the best interest of the town. Because sometimes what's good for one's personal position, and then when you sit on this side and you see what the town council has to deal with and all of the contingencies, then you know you have to support what's in the best interest of the town. I have the time, I have the interest, and I also rub elbows with legislators and people in political positions. I'm very comfortable swimming in those waters and I'm keenly interested in it. So I nominate myself.
Okay. Well, and, well, yeah, so, so I think I've, I feel certainly a majority to come back and, um, I'm assuming you're going to want to keep your name. and I'm assuming you're going to want to keep your name, you know, in the hat for the 22nd and then have everybody else just kind of think on it, because. Yeah, I think we should all wait. Somebody else nominated Debbie, so, but you can come back on the 22nd and, and then see if you'd be willing to, want to do it, willing to do it. And then we'll probably have a process like we do mayor and vice mayor. We'd have a couple people potentially on the docket. That sounds good. Or not. Is everybody in agreement to kind of at least be thinking about it and then come back on the 22nd? But we know we have somebody that is interested and somebody that was told they're interested.
I could be fun and just ask him to.
Right, right. Well, we could do, you could do that on the 22nd if you want. But I, I feel as a majority, at least for the process, just to come back on the 22nd and ponder on it, pray on it and think about it. Okay? Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Thanks. Having no more further business, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
(inaudible).
Well, that would be totally right. I would be, this is totally what I'd want to do if I wasn't working.
What's that?
This is what I'm signing.